Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation from Reverend John B. Clark, Senior Pastor of Riverdale Christian Church in Riverdale. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will ask our Veteran of the Month, Captain Olivia E. Smith, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Chairman Turner, Commissioners, all in attendance, please join me in prayer. Almighty God, the Creator, the Maker of heaven and earth, we come before your throne of grace on this evening, seeking your help, your guidance, seeking that you would be who you are. In your omnipresent presence, be with us even this day, in this meeting today. In your omniscience, oh God, you know what we stand in need of. You know what this world stands in need of. You know what our great state stands in need of. You know what our county stands in need of. Be, oh God, who you are, Jehovah Jireh, the Lord, our provider. You are the prince of peace, Jehovah Shalom. We can only have peace through you, heavenly Father. Lead us and guide us. Bless this county. Bless this community. Bless those that serve, those that lead in this county. In the name of Jesus, we pray, as the Lord, our shepherd, our leader. Lead them, guide them, instruct them, and bless those that serve and lead in this county in your own special and beautiful way. We love you, God, and we thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your love toward us. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen. And amen.
Amen, amen.
Captain Smith, is she present?
Yes.
Okay. Please lead us.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December 5th, 2023 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
All right, hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is a presentation, Veteran of the Month, presented by Senior Services.
All right, our Veteran of the Month, and as I always say, every veteran who has served and continue to serve is all our heroes, and that we could still should continue to support and honor those men and women who are protecting our country. This month's veteran is Captain Olivia E. Smith. Captain Olivia E. Smith, Ph.D., is a licensed social worker with over thirty years of clinical and administrative experience in behavior health, military health, and other health-related programs. She served as a captain, medical officer, and chief of family advocacy in the United States Air Force during Desert Storm. Dr. Smith has a personal and professional interest in program planning and policy development as it relates to the health care of United States veterans and their families. Presently, Dr. Smith advocates and empowers male and female veterans to obtain benefits and services to improve their quality of life with respect and dignity. Her passion is to serve women veterans. Dr. Smith's work as a pioneer, humanitarian, and veteran advocate exemplifies her devotion to promoting the welfare of veterans. Her special determination is the elimination of many service blockages that tend to cause veterans to experience undue pain and suffering. While serving in the military, Dr. Smith incurred a chronic illness that greatly affected her physical health. She utilizes her personal journey with the Department of Veterans Affairs to serve as a tireless volunteer. Presently, she advocates for veterans, families, and significant others. Dr. Smith commits her unrelenting efforts to make a difference in the lives of veterans by assisting with information sharing related to post-traumatic stress syndrome, military sexual trauma for men and women, homelessness, health and disabilities, financial support, education, burial, and other benefits. Dr. Smith is a lifelong member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. She's a member of Disabled American Veterans and longstanding member of the National Association of Social Workers and National Association of Social Workers, Georgia Chapter, and Georgia Military Women, which includes women veterans from all branches of the military. Dr. Smith's scholastic achievements include a Master of Social Work degree from Howard University in Washington, D.C., and holds a Doctor of Philosophy and Social Work. Dr. Smith, a disabled veteran and social worker, is a pioneer who provides unyielding time and efforts to serve her country and advocate for veterans' rights and services. She demonstrates a determination to be a change agent in the community and to affect the lives of veterans who swore to give their lives to serve and protect the country and us. Her steadfast energy to work for others is very inspirational. Dr. Smith truly exemplifies good citizenry and makes a difference in many ways in our country. Please help me welcome and recognize Dr. Captain Olivia E. Smith.
The Board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Say.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number nine, Budget Amendment 2-13, presented by our interim CFO, Stacy Merritt.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner.
Is Ms. Davis not here? Mr. Chair, or Madam Clerk? Ms. Davis isn't here?
Is there a presentation, Madam Clerk?
Oh, yes. I apologize. I'm so sorry. We have a presentation next. That is by Ms. Kimberly Davis, and it is entitled Progressive Committees. And that is requested by Commissioner Felicia Franklin and is presented by Mrs. Kimberly Davis.
Well, good evening. I'm Kimberly Davis, a proud resident of Clayton County for the past twenty-five years, and I'm currently serving as a Vice President of Panhandle Valley Estates HOA.
And I am a Tonya Jean Funny. I worked with the county. I'm also a resident of Panhandle Valley Estates, and I work with the county to get our HOA.
Today, I bring forth the critical matter for our neighborhood and communities, the need for speed determinant devices. The urgency of this plea is underscored by numerous near-miss incidents in my subdivision alone, where vehicles include those of residents, visitors, Lyft drivers, FedEx, UPS, and Amazon drivers seem to navigate our streets as speed more appropriate for the Atlanta Motor Speedway. It has become a pressing safety concern that demands our immediate attention. Despite these challenges we face, one assumed roadblock is that Clayton County prohibits the use of speed determinant devices. Yet, it's worth highlighting that speed bumps are prevalent in school zones, parks, and apartment complexes across Clayton County. As a resident here who care deeply about our safety and well-being of the community, we must collectively address this issue. So the question before you today, how can we effectively advocate or petition for the installation of speed determinant devices in our neighborhoods to ensure safety for our residents? Thank you for your time.
The slide with the... The car. The car. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Jama Smashum. This is my house. I'm a Clayton County resident as well. I've been here for five years. And this accident happened earlier this year where a driver ran into my home. This had been, this was someone that we'd asked numerous times to please slow down driving in our neighborhood. She's been asked by numerous neighbors. She's actually a neighbor, but this is a result of speeding through the neighborhood. She ran into our home, and thankfully, we had, have a porch, or else she would have been in my living room. If there were speed humps in place, this would have definitely been avoided, because my house is on an incline. I am not directly on the street. I'm quite a distance off the street. So, you know, her excessive, excessive speed caused her to climb that incline and run into my house and do structural damage. So, very much so in support of speed humps in our communities. Thank you.
And also, I'd just like to add that I think everybody on the board, except for maybe Commissioner Anderson, has been on the board for quite some time, and we have been asking for this in neighborhoods for, for quite some time. So we hope that we are able to sit down and discuss this with transportation and the county to see what we can do about making our neighborhoods safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm definitely not opposed to getting with...
Dan, my name is Gloria Matarko. I currently serve as the president of our HOA board, and this is a complaint that I'm getting from neighbors over and over, and I do not have an answer. And that's why we're here today, to ensure we're able to provide an answer directly coming from you guys, to ensure that they're in the know of what's going on, because every day I get the email, every day I get the calls, I don't have anything to give to them. We even shared concerns about possibly getting, like, the portable ones, but that still has to come through you guys. So, just trying to get some clarity as to what we need to do, why we have to get a portable one, why the city can't put one in for us, or, again, what the next direction would be for us.
Well, with that being said, we can definitely sit down and talk with the Transportation Development Director, as well as with legal, because there are, there is some liability questions that would need to be handled or asked. But we can definitely set up an appointment, and I believe...
Can I say something?
Yeah, yeah. That, uh, lost my train of thought now.
I'm sorry.
Y'all know how to get in touch with me, I hope I know, Ms. Funny does. To get in touch with me, and we'll set a meeting up, and we will sit down and talk through some things. But in the interim, have you spoken with the police chief about increased patrols if you're having a traffic issue?
They have, Mr. Chair.
Say what?
They have.
No, I'm asking now. Yes? Okay.
That's why I asked for the presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me say, we have a committee that's been meeting over the past year. Mr. Matarko, has it been? And I think you all are ready to present something to us in the next month or so. I don't know if you want to say something or not, but regarding...
Mr. Matarko, come, come out to the podium, please.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. We have been looking at traffic calming devices. We can probably bring something back to y'all for consideration in January for a comprehensive program.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak now?
Commissioner Franklin.
First of all, I want to say thank you, Ms. Davis, for your determination. Thank you for speaking up on behalf of your community, as well as all of you ladies, particularly yourself, your niece, because unfortunately, my family dealt with that many years ago, and it was a near miss that my sister didn't lose her life. Secondly, I am glad that Commissioner Hambrick remembered the fact that this board voted well over a year ago to do this study. So what gets me is that we do a lot of talking, but we do not hear benchmarks of where we are on studies, and we shouldn't have to have you all come before this board just for us to hear this. And I'm glad Commissioner Hambrick mentioned about the committee, because, Mr. Matarko, I need to be filled in on the committee that's been meeting. As commissioners, we're hearing this, we're seeing this. You all are here today, but I also want to mention Mr. Wagner, who unfortunately had someone to run into his backyard and almost kill his wife, Teresa. So this has been an ongoing issue, and the fact that we constantly hear it's not legal is not acceptable anymore, because as you brought before us, it's, they have traffic calming devices everywhere else. We can't keep doing the same thing expecting different results without specific measures and timelines and implementation. So I'm so glad that you mentioned, Mr. Matarko, you're going to bring that to us. I would like to be able to see the work that has been done up until now, so that we can be responsive to the community, because this is an issue within our community.
Anybody else got comments?
I think that, no.
I would like to thank Mr. Matarko, and thank you all for your work and all.
I think that, go ahead.
Please take the mic, ma'am.
No problem. I will ask, if possible, we're still able to meet with you to discuss the legal, so that while they're working on their piece, we're able to work simultaneously, so that we are able to ensure, hopefully by the beginning of next year, we can start looking into movement as opposed to just conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Still set up a meeting. We will talk, and we'll discuss the full logistics of what's going on. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your hard work.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, now that we have a unanimous vote for approval of the consent agenda, our next item will now be number nine, which is the Budget Amendment 2-13, and this is presented by our interim CFO, Stacy Merritt.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I've got a budget amendment tonight for the sheriff's office, and it is changed from what is in the agenda. He did request a little bit of a difference. We are requesting $508,500 to be appropriated for tracking monitors and related costs for the jail. The difference is coming in because he's requesting a company that can do the installation and removal of the equipment, which the other company could not. And I believe he's here, if you have any questions.
Chief, and I'm sorry, Sheriff, I'm sorry, Sheriff. Sheriff Allen, please.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Board of Commissioners, what we have is, I would like to take a contract that we currently have at, within the county, and expand it to assist me in the jail. We have approximately three hundred inmates that are sleeping on the floor out of the eighteen hundred inmates that I have in the jail. So if I was able to release on this ankle monitor, that would help me release some people out of the jail. Now, juvenile court does do ankle monitoring, Superior Court does ankle monitoring, but I have the ability as the sheriff to do what's called an OR, an on-reconnaissance release. But when I take, when I do that, I do that just kind of, just on faith. We're doing, we're doing a prayer and throwing it up. But if I was able to have an ankle monitor, where I can place someone on an ankle monitor and still do that release, that'd give me a little bit more security, and that's what I want to do here with that extra money.
So, help me with this, because she said it was an increase.
Yes, sir.
And you said, according to what she said, the increase was due to the other company not being able to provide full scope of service?
Correct. So there's, there's two companies. One is with juvenile court, and one does services for Superior Court. Well, with juveniles, the probation officer, the officer that's handling the juvenile does all the legwork, because the company cannot go into the home of a juvenile and deal with the juvenile. Versus the one with Superior Court, they're able, it's full service, they're able to do everything that's needed to be done. And of course, I think one was $2.99 per day, and the other one was $5 per day, which, 5.65, which takes it up.
And this is going to help you alleviate some of the overcrowding?
Absolutely.
Anybody have a question for the sheriff?
I do.
Commissioner Franklin.
Oh, hey, Chair.
Hey, how are you?
Gooding you. I got a question. You said, let me ask you, these two companies, because I, that you're speaking of, who holds the agreement? Who's going to hold that contract? Who's going to be liable for whether that product works or doesn't work?
So right now, the, the contract is with the county and central service and Superior Court.
And what's the company?
What I'm, A and A monitoring. What I'm requesting is that the funding be placed with me, so that I can be able to issue the monitors without going through the courts to do it.
Okay. So A and A is one company name. What's the other company name?
The other one is BI Inc. BI Inc. is the other company with juvenile court.
So you're going to, then, you're going to have both of those agreements, because you have that ability. So both ability, both contracts will rest with your office, correct?
Just one.
Okay.
The expert talk on that part.
No, I just wanted to get at the, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to just give a little clarity on the contracts. As the sheriff said, there are two contracts. One is a co-op through BI Corporation. That is what we're using with juvenile justice. We do the, we do the quarterly vendor performance evaluations on those. And then we have the other company, which is what we use with Superior Court, and that is for the A and A, I think it's all county security. But we also do VPEs for those as well. Okay.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Now, tell me what these monitors do? Because I'm used, I've heard of monitors when people are on probation or whatever, so what's the difference here?
Yes. So right now, the, the judges can order, as it sits now, the judges can order that someone is, is released to ankle monitor, or placed on ankle monitor. That's how it is right now. What I, what I have the ability to do is, I'll give you an example.
Can you speak up a little bit?
What, what I have the ability, I'll give you an example of something that I just did. There was an eighty-year-old lady who, her and her husband were going through health, health issues, and they thought their, their end was coming. The, the, the wife grabs a pillow, and she gets ready to put it over the husband's face. Well, she couldn't do it, and she couldn't go through with it, so she calls the cops on her cell and says, hey, I, I just couldn't do it. Well, she was arrested for aggravated assault, which is Georgia's attempted murder. Well, now she's in my jail. She's eighty-five years old, she's, she's very sickly, and the doctors told me that she, she, she probably wouldn't make it. So what I did was call the ankle monitor company, had an ankle monitor placed on her, and she just went back to her home. Well, I didn't have to, have the bill of, of medical and everything that needed to be there. So that's what I want to be able to do, go down with the fine-toe comb with my team, and there's people that are here for criminal trespass, for loitering, for public drunk, just for, just small crimes, that just because they don't have enough money to bond out, they can't get out. So two people do the same crime, $12,000 bond, one has the funds to get out, and they can get out, and one can't, and they ultimately end up staying in the jail. We just had a death that everyone knows about, a $12,000 bond for two years. That's someone I could put out on ankle monitor.
Okay, so what's the difference with what you're talking about and, and what the courts put people on probation? I'm confused.
Madam Commissioner, there, there's other rules and, and reasons why the courts do things and don't do things. I can't speak to them and why, but I know I have the ability to do it and not just talk about it, and just do it. Do an OR, place the person on a, place the person on ankle monitor, and then now they're out of the jail.
So if I, if I can just interject to his point, one is before, if they first come into the jail, if they set a bond, he can release them four times. If, when you're looking at the judges giving somebody probation, that might be, they might sit in the jail for a while before they go before a judge, and then they get that probation sentence with a condition of them being on ankle monitor. So if a shoplifter comes in and there's $1,000 bond, if they don't have the money to get out to help ease overcrowding, he can put the ankle monitor on them, and then they can, he can let them out on an OR bond.
Okay, so who keeps up with this?
Excellent. So part of, part of the agreement is that they're going to have a monitoring company that they monitor, as in the company, then also, the sheriff's office has the ability to log in and monitor the inmates as well.
So we have to pay the company to monitor?
Yes, it's included in the, in the price. The option, the option per day is included in it. So I'll give you an example. For the monitor, I'm not looking at the sheet, but for the monitoring, it's like $4, and then for the... it's like four dollars, and for the monitoring, it's a dollar.
It's a per day, per inmate?
Yeah, so that cost is listed at the four sixty-five per device, per day. It is a leased device. And then actually, the monitoring is one dollar. So that's going to be your total of five sixty-five per person, per client.
And you got two companies.
And so the first company, which is, it is a cheaper amount, is two ninety-five, but they do not install nor remove the actual item, because they cannot go into the juvenile's home. So this company does everything. So whoever's going to be placed on probation, I mean, I'm sorry, whoever's going to be released, they're bound, you know, to the area with the sheriff. That company will come and actually install. And then when it's time to take it off, they will remove it as well as part of this cost.
But you keep saying juvenile. Sheriff doesn't deal with juvenile.
Right, but the contract, we have the other contract that's two ninety-five is for juvenile.
And that's the contract we hold, correct?
Right, we hold both of them.
That's the first budget amendment.
Right, the first one was for the two ninety-five.
Chairman? Commissioner Franklin? I do have two questions. One, I've heard, as far as A and A is BI Inc., I know the city of Atlanta or Fulton County Jail has just experienced some massive, I guess, where these things weren't working, with the company. Was one of these companies?
Yes.
One of the way we're using?
So, I'm glad you brought that up. A and A, A and A monitoring is associated with that, with the company from Fulton. But there's a, I want to be clear on the difference of what's going on. One was dealing with inside the jail and infrastructure inside of the jail of technology or getting something going inside the jail. And the other one, what I'm talking about, deals with outside the jail. And of course, this is already an existing contract that we have, that's already proven. We're already doing it. All I'm asking is just to expand the number of users that we're already using. So it's not like we're, it's not like we're getting a brand-new product that we have not used and have not seen work. We're currently using it today, and it's currently working in Superior Court. And we've been using it for three years, correct?
That worked since 2000.
Yes.
How many units are currently being, are currently being used?
From the company now?
Yes.
So it's because I don't hold that contract, and that goes through the courts? I'm not, I'm not clear on that. But we, but that, the company itself is the largest company in the state of Georgia. They have about three thousand ankle monitors altogether. And I think in the state of Georgia, they have about eighty jurisdictions that they're actually operating in.
And my last question is, have you spoken to the judges and the courts? And how do they feel about this, this kind of program?
So it's totally separate. So remember I told you, I've been doing, I've been doing OR releases the entire year to relieve some of the pressure, right? So if I do an OR, and magistrate court does, they call it judicial releases. They do them as well. So it's not anything that would derail their daily operations. It's just something just to give us, me and this is the sheriff, a little more security with the people that I'm already releasing. I believe this year, if I had to guess it, I've probably done over maybe four or five hundred ORs already.
And of those, how many have come back into your system from violations or anything? Of those four to five hundred?
Now, that, some of them are, they get out for loitering. I let them out for loitering, and they come right back for loitering. Specifically with this GPS monitoring, now we can kind of monitor and see where they are and see what they're doing.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Board.
Are we both? Did we take, did we already get a motion on this? No, no, we did not. No, we did not. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin?
The Board has the authority to approve funding for all elected officials, particularly constitutional officers. The constitutional officers have the ability to hold their own agreement, their own contract. I do have to lean towards the comments and the questions that were asked. And I would feel that it would be best of you as the sheriff, if you want this to be your agreement, you hold the agreement. Then the only thing we're doing is providing the funding, which the additional funding should already be coming from those anyway. I have great concern over this, but I do understand the authority of this Board very clearly. The authority of this Board is to be able to approve funding, not necessarily the agreement itself. So if that agreement is that important to your organization, then I feel that you all need to be able to hold that agreement and hold said liability within your organization.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
What was yours?
Nay.
No, it fails. Two, three. Next, Madam Clerk?
Our next item is item number ten, which is the Board appointment.
All right, first Board appointment is to the Community Service Board. Martin Thompson resigned from the Community Service Board and moved out of the state. Delroy Bernard filled this existing term, and it expired on October seven, 2023. New term is for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on October seven, 2026. This is a full Board appointment, and I'd like to reappoint Delroy Bernard. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next Board appointment is to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. Joe Grubbs has resigned from the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council. He was appointed in 2021. Field unexpired term of Janice Scott. New term is for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on February twenty-eighth, 2024. Vice Chair Davis?
I'd like to hold this to the next meeting. I've contacted someone, they've not gotten back with me yet.
Madam Clerk, you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Next Board appointment, Civil Service Board, Virginia Phillips Hall. Term on the Civil Service Board will expire on December thirty-first, 2023. New term is for three years, expiring on December thirty-first, 2026. Full Board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint Ms. Virginia Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next Board appointment is to the Civil Service Board. Dr. Cephas Jackson's term on the Civil Service Board will expire on December thirty-first, 2023. New term is for three years, expiring December thirty-first, 2026. At large, any recommendations?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I'd like to reappoint Dr. Cephas Jackson to the Civil Service Board.
All right, I'll second that motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next Board appointment is to the Tax Assessors Board. Ted Lawson's term on the Tax Assessors Board will expire December thirty-first, 2023. New term is three years, expiring December thirty-first, 2026. Full Board at large, any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Ms. Jacqueline Wills, former clerk of court.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board, with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Please remember, comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon Board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Madam Clerk, Vice Chairman Davis, Chairman Turner. MacRavelli said, "Never let a crisis go to waste." After Commissioner Franklin's embarrassing behavior and assault on an EMT worker, she said, "I'm still running to be the chairman." From 2018 to 2020, she didn't pay her taxes. She paid two tax liens May 2023. Falsified a 2020 Declaration of Canonacy and affidavit. Demanded the former CFO violate the credit card travel and reimbursement policy. Violated campaign expense and expenditure policy. The Code of Conduct is based on parliamentary procedures and Robert's Rules of Order. Commissioner Franklin has not read it, or she blatantly violates it. Commissioner Franklin is rude to the chairman, condescending to the COO and department heads, obnoxious to speakers during public comments, uses point of order to violate the First Amendment. She violates her oath of office and does not possess the knowledge, ethics, or temperament to be a chairman. Oh, by the way, you asked a couple of weeks ago, how much money we've given the Sheriff's Department? Twenty twenty-two was over ten million. The beginning of this year was over three million. Couple of weeks ago was two million. What is this, an ATM? And he's got the PIN number?
Mia Ballinger. Mia Ballinger, District Four. Good evening, everyone. Please allow me to read a few issues from some of our Clayton County residents. They are as follows. We are spending so much time and energy focusing on the events that occurred on September twenty-ninth, 2023, that somewhere along the way, we lost focus on affordable summer programs for our special needs children and adults. Mental health facilities that are in desperate need of funding. The well-being of our children impacted by the child molestation cover-up at the Rainbow House, which is now shut down. Can we use this time and energy to focus on the crucial mistake made by the Clayton County's District Attorney Office, which resulted in the murder of a beautiful young woman? What about a former Clayton County policeman who received not one, not two, not six, but seven felony charges for the murder of nineteen-year-old Eric Holmes? Yet this officer was allowed to walk free from the Clayton County courthouse. Let's focus on Officer Armando Mendoza and others who died tragically on the dangerous intersection of Terror Boulevard in North Main two years ago, yet there are no safety measures put in place in this dangerous intersection in District Four. Can we focus on our senior citizens being put out of their homes, our nursing facilities, Southern Regional Hospital? Some of us healthcare employees have to travel to Fayetteville and other places in order to work. Actually, I'm late now, so I can't even make up a story, because I'm sure they're going to see me. But anyhow, the increase of taxes, increasing crime rate here in Clayton County, the safety of our incarcerated loved ones, safety improvements in our jail, our homeless population. What about the five hundred and fifty-something-odd thousand dollars that we are so patiently waiting for? Can we please use this time and energy to focus on the needs of our county residents? Can we also focus on public comments returning to the beginning of the meeting? Thank you so much for everything. Shout out to Laura Davis. I saw her at Publix. She's one of the best orthodontists, so if y'all need some braces, she's at Publix. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Aretha Enslie.
Chairman, I did not pay for that.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did. Ms. Enslie.
Good evening, Chairman Turner, Vice Chairman Davis, and Commissioners. My name is Aretha Enslie, and I am a resident in unincorporated Hampton in Clayton County. Ms. Anderson, I see you have campaign signs out for this Board chair, but you have consistently shown that you don't want to be bothered with citizens of District One and countywide. You moved public comments and citizens' voices, concerns, and issues to the end of the meeting after you all have made decisions. Incompetency regarding county business, self-serving, misuse and waste of our taxpayers' money. There's so much going on in this country, I just understand why we have to follow it. Ms. Franklin, you have consistently shown you are not fit to serve in any leadership capacity validated with your latest public intoxication. You have no respect for yourself nor the citizens of Clayton County. Not only are you both an embarrassment to this county, but a huge liability. What is the status of the lawsuits against the three women commissioners regarding slander case against Brandon Turner and Ultravirus, aka Ultravirus? Ramona Bivins, your to-date cost for attorney fees, what are they? Ms. Hambrick, you instructed Senators C. and Davenport to vote against the will of the people. House Bill six seventy-eight, Code of Ethics, legislation for Clayton County Commissioners. Why? Why do you all refuse to operate in an order, decency, transparency, and accountable manner? We need some help in this district. We need to do whatever needs to be done to correct it. Thank you.
Atanya Funnin.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Community. I am Atanya Jean Funnin, unincorporated Clayton County. And I stand before you tonight to speak about the Freeport tax that was recently approved by the voters of Clayton County. And while I celebrate its passing, I would have liked to see you all educate the community more about the actual initiative. Of course, I'm not speaking to, I'm not addressing Ms. Commissioner Franklin, because I know you didn't support the Freeport tax with a yes vote. But for the rest of the people that put it on the ballot, I would have liked to have seen more support. But where do we go from now with that Freeport tax? I would like to request that the funding from the referendum go to residents where they can see it. This money, I hope, is, would be used for a comprehensive Keep Clayton Beautiful initiative, street lights, road repairs, even those speed bumps we talked about tonight, and to support our most vulnerable residents. What I don't want to see happen with that Freeport tax is that it gets absorbed into the general fund, and then the residents of Clayton County never see where that particular money is going. Also, since I have a couple of minutes, I would like to state that our vulnerable citizens that was here tonight for public comment would have had to stay here much longer if this was a longer meeting. And I think it's really unfair for those residents to have to sit here for a whole meeting to have, for them to have their time for public comment. So with the twenty seconds I have left, I would like to ask Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Franklin, and Commissioner Hambrick to please put public comment back to the front and to make it three minutes again. Thank you for your time.
Miki Garber.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. My conversation tonight is I want to address the litter problem, but the litter problem in a different way. I will not mention any names, but I'll explain the situation. This information was provided to me by code enforcement by Supervisor Davis. Ladder stakes, advertising roofing, lawn maintenance, junk pickup, and all other signs have a code against them for, as litter. They're not supposed to be out there stapled to telephone poles or put on ladder stakes, which are all signs such as against code. However, there is no code addressing campaign signs, addressing time when campaign signs can go up. Campaign signs are contributing to our litter problem. Put out at this early time is contributing to our litter problem. Horse races, swimming races, track and field races, all have even starting times. And you should all have even times putting out the signs. These signs, you know who you are. I'm not going to... These signs, you know who you are, I'm not going to mention any names, but are contributing to our litter problem. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, Gwendolyn Gooden, Clayton County. Commissioners, Chairman Turner. Commissioner Franklin, you agreed to abide by Clayton County Ordinance, Code of Conduct, and Code of Ethics. However, you have broken more rules than I have time to enumerate. I will list a few. You broke the rules of abstention, 70-65, and Conflict of Interest 2-35, Sections 10 and 11, when you voted not once but twice for taxpayers to pay your excessive legal fees. You falsified information on your 2020 Campaign and Declaration Form. You were fined $4,250 for the Georgia State Ethics Board for misappropriation of campaign funds, but your most egregious and embarrassing act of intoxication and public disorder has now made you the poster child for the files against EMTs. The video has gone viral on the internet ever since Michelle News of News Report on WSB TV. You have compromised this board and the county, yet you have the audacity to sue our county. Per the Clayton County Board of Commissioners Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics, the board could have, should have stripped you of all your voting rights, as well as the title of Vice Chair. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Well, good night. I really had a lot of comments, oh, sorry, Barbara Gibbs, Rex, Georgia. I really had a lot of comments that I wanted to get clarity on from all of you, but I need more time. But I did want to ask a question to you, Ms. Anderson, which I can never get a straight answer when I attend your meetings. CPU. I've met one of your, I would say, associates, and I'm trying to determine, do I reach out to her, or will she reach out to me? Several people in my community have asked me questions about, what is a CPU? Who are the CPU? How are they funded? How do we contact them? And my question to them is always the same. I've asked these questions myself, and never got a straight answer. So I had to bring it to the board. Another question, what are we doing about this trash service? Mandatory trash. Has any of you tabled that for later discussion? Because I haven't heard anything else about it. Thank you.
Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. Ms. Franklin, her church folks and enablers' responses to her recent public intoxication, alcohol, weed, and disorly conduct were dismissive, a scripture regarding an adulterous woman, and she would do a better job as chair even painted as intoxicated than current administration is sober. Ephesians 5:18, "Do not get drunk on wine, which leads to debauchery." Where were the same church folks and doctors of divinity when the three commissioners, the sheriff, and their minions slandered Commissioner Davis, the chairman's son, county directors, citizens, and most recently the 404 establishment through Nitsel, social media, radio, regular, and fake news outlet? The one who conceals hatred has lying lips. Whomever other slander is a fool, Proverbs 10:18. James 3:14-16 referenced bitter envy and selfish ambitious as unspiritual and demotic, resulting in disorder and evil practice. As such, certain commissioners proven there is no honor among thieves. Until the entities mentioned above do right by the citizens of Clayton County, everything they think about is going to crumble and fall the color purple. In other words, do not be deceived. God is not mocked for whatever one sows, that he or she also reaps. Galatians 7:7.
Madam Clerk, how are we on time?
After Mr. Cox, we have time for one more speaker.
Good evening, Chairman and members of this board. I actually am surprised, so I want to thank you and applaud your vote tonight to turn down the additional monies that were asked for by our sheriff, but I would ask that we have accountability for the monies that we've already given. I'm certainly concerned about the welfare and the well-being of our community and those that are incarcerated in our community, sir. It bothers me that I get calls, numerous of calls, about people who can't make bond because there's not enough personnel, people who are not having eviction served because they don't have enough personnel. But I sat here in one meeting not long ago when sheriff said, "If you gave him the money that you give him, he'd have full staff." So I'm confused. So I'm here tonight to try to figure out where we are and what we're doing as a board to find out where we are with these monies. And as I close, I would say this. I applaud the effort that sheriff has taken to take that job, but he wasn't quite prepared for it at the time, and I'm hoping that he'll learn as he goes until we can get him back in the public sector. But I'm going to say this, we have got to do better. We can't keep spending money and giving money, and I appreciate the fact that you guys realize that tonight, and I'm hoping this is a fresh start for a new Clayton County. Thank you so much.
Olivia Smith. Carolyn Robinson.
Nice coat, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, thank you. Timothy Bondell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. I think that there has been a consistent message tonight, and I think that I would like to expound about transparency. There are several issues that are concerned. The $559,000 with the Roman deal, that has not been addressed. We have not discussed it recently in work sessions. We have a website. The splashed dollars are transparent and on the website. Unfortunately for the citizens such as myself, I have to constantly do open records requests in order to get certain information. So the Roman deal is one issue, but I'm also concerned about the IGA agreement between the Development Authority and the county. That issue has not come to a conclusion. We, and we have a very effective economic development office, so there seems to be a conflict, and we need to clarify that particular issue and clarify and get that agreement solidified so the citizens and the developers can have clarity. Secondly, on the Civil Service Board, we have a bunch of lawsuits that are pending. Quite a few have been settled. Unfortunately, these decisions are made in executive session. Now, once they are settled, I think in full transparency, this should be exposed because it directly affects the general fund balance as we move forward. So the citizens are frustrated with the lack of transparency, so we have a multitude of issues, and I think that if we be intentional and deliberate on being transparent about the activities and the longevity of certain issues, I think that the citizens will be more satisfied. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session and before, or as you come? Madam Clerk, you got an announcement for us?
Yes, I, after, during the decision.
For to introduce your new assistant.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Tia. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. After two years almost, I finally have a new assistant. Her name is Avontia Green, and she goes by Tia. Thank you for welcoming her, and thank you for your patience over these years, and we appreciate it.
All right.
Mr. Chair. A point of privilege, please. I would like to recognize our councilman from the city of Riverdale. He is constantly here, making sure that he's engaged, and I don't know if we realize that he's constantly being engaged. And I also want to recognize Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk has done an amazing job for well over a year. You did the job without even getting higher pay until, actually, the ladies on the board worked to make that happen for you, and you did it without one complaint. And I hope that you will continue to be successful, especially with your new assistant, and that you'll have an opportunity to be able to continue to engage in your role a little bit further. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Board.
Ms. Reed.
Oh, I thought.
Oh, did somebody say something?
Uh-uh.
No.
Okay. Well, I'll say something.
Executive session, do we need executive session?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Please say no.
Mr. Vice Chair and Board. Yes, we do need an executive session on litigation and real estate.
Is there a motion going to executive session for litigation and real estate?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
All right, first I have Resolution 2023-272, which is a resolution the Clayton County Board of Commissioners approving an annexation request by the municipal governing authority of the city of Hampton to annex certain real property located at Zero Forston Road to authorize the county to enter into an agenda government agreement with the city of Hampton to authorize the chairman or his designate to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
Take both of them?
Uh, well.
Well, that's okay. I'm with you. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I can take these two together if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. First is a settlement agreement in a matter of, between Willie Ponder and Clayton County, Georgia, related to Clayton County State Court Civil Action File Number 2020 CB 005-00056. And it is in the amount of $225,000, and it's related to an incident that occurred on January 17, 2018. And the second is in the matter of Daphne DiRiso versus Clayton County, Georgia, Civil Action File Number 2020 CB 00056. And that is an accident that occurred on January 17, 2018, and that is in the amount of $25,000. And authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue sources dictated by the terms of the agreement.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions on either item? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.